Okay, I'm going to call to order a meeting of the City of Santa Rosa Planning Commission, and ask for roll call, please.
Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present.
Thanks. Next, we move to the approval of the minutes of our April 12th meeting. Commissioners, any changes, corrections to those minutes? Those will stand as printed. Before we get started tonight, I just want to have a couple of preliminary comments. With regards to item 10.1, which is the Verizon Baker Avenue Cell Tower, staff has recommended in a memo to the commission for a continuance of that to a date uncertain. So, the commission will vote on that request, and if the commission votes to continue that item to a date uncertain, there will be no public hearing on that item tonight. And then, because the date is uncertain, then there would be new notice given to the public when that item is going to be up for consideration again. But if the commission does vote to continue the item, then there won't be a public hearing, and I do have speaker cards on the item, but I won't be calling those cards if the commission votes that way. So I want to get that out there so people are fully informed before we launch into our agenda. And I also just want to briefly comment about the layout of the room. If you've been to commission meetings before, it used to be that members of the public who wanted to comment on a project or under public comment could come down here. And speaking for myself, I thought it was nice when members of the public could be closer to us so we could make eye contact and get a little bit more of a feel for the comments from the speakers. And I understand the city council made a decision to keep this area closed off, and they made that decision based on information that they have that I don't know what they based it on, and I respect their decision. But I would hope that in the future, we could return the room to a state where people could make comments from down here. Okay. Next, let's move to public comment. This is a time for any member of the public wishing to speak on a matter that is not noticed as a public hearing tonight to approach one of the microphones and give public comments to the commission. I don't have any, let's see. I got a couple of late cards here, just bear with me, please. I have two cards here for, let's see. Corporate Center Parkway item. And I don't recall that that was noticed as a public hearing tonight, so I'm going to ask to take comments on that right now.
It's item four, which is a public comment.
Okay.
The address is Corporate Center Parkway.
Okay, oh, I see.
Sorry about that.
Sure, thank you.
Every city has a different form.
Great. So, Sunshine Lencio, followed by Karen Woodson.
Great. Good afternoon, thank you for your time. I'm Sunshine Lencio. I'm corporate counsel with Privateer Holdings. Privateer Holdings is an investment fund that has been stewards of legal cannabis globally. We have a wholly owned operating facility that is licensed by the City of Santa Rosa Stewart Devant Ventures, and that's the facility that's at Corporate Center Parkway. Corporate Center Parkway is in the business park. Given that you're not taking comments on item 8.3, I'm here today to discuss zoning as it relates to the business park, as we have distinguished between type six, level one manufacturing, and type seven, level two manufacturing in the City of Santa Rosa to exclude business parks from being able to conduct volatile manufacturing. And it's our position that the exclusion of volatile manufacturing from the business park comes from a place of misunderstanding around the actual closed-loop systems that are involved in a type seven facility under State of California regulations, and that it's a safe process that can be mitigated just by following state and local laws and regulations as they pertain to fire safety. In particular, we believe that the business park lends itself to light industrial and research and development uses, uses that could involve the same materials that a volatile manufacturer might use in a closed-loop extraction system. It also has specific requirements as to the Building and Fire Safety Code, in particularly when it comes to HVAC systems. You can have, you know, C1D1 level facilities operating a volatile extraction system in a space that is akin to a business park. So today, we understand that you are here to study manufacturing generally as it pertains to cannabis businesses, and we feel that the staff should also consider whether or not the classification between level one and level two, now that we have regulations on the state level that have provided more clarity than the city had at the time that you were all doing your study, that we can actually find that the business park is a suitable location for such activities. I'm not going to take up the full time. I recognize that that's not the intent of today's agenda item, but it's the first opportunity we've had in this new licensing year to have a discussion with the commission as it pertains to type six versus type seven activity and the exclusion of the business park, which is under your light industrial zoning, from such activities. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much. I do want to just comment, although it wasn't clear from the agenda, we will open for public comment on the study session item, and you're welcome to make any additional comments at that time.
Great, and I believe Ms. Woodson is parking, so, oh, she's here, great, never mind, sorry.
Great, so next is Karen Woodson. Okay, thanks very much. Anybody else wishing to speak under public comment? You don't need to have filled out a card. Not seeing anybody else approach one of the podiums, so I'm going to close public comment and move to planning commissioners' reports. Commissioners, any reports? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to department reports.
I sent a communication out to the planning commission highlighting some housing action plan elements and some other updates that I thought would be of interest to you in terms of a status. Update on several initiatives in progress with the city. There is one update to that update, and that is the Resilient City Development Measures Ordinance that was scheduled for its second reading, its adoption last Tuesday was continued, and I believe it was continued to May 22nd. So, that's the only change to the communication that I sent you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item eight of our agenda tonight, 8.1, which is a study session on commercial cannabis manufacturing for volatile, level-two uses of manufacturing. This is not an occasion for the commission to take any action. It's a study session to educate the commission and the public about the volatile manufacturing that might be allowed under our new regulations. And Claire Hartman will be giving the staff presentation.
Great, and before I do, I might have missed it, I was looking at my notes. Did the commission make statements of abstentions?
They did not.
Okay.
I'm going to ask the commissioners to make statements of abstention, any abstentions tonight. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to the study session for volatile manufacturing.
I thought I knew how to do this, right? Okay, great, thank you. So tonight, we're doing something a little different. We are trying to get ahead of some applications that will be before the planning commission. A new type of, not a new type of application, but a new land use that the commission hasn't considered before. So, in particular, we're going to look at one of the land uses that is now permitted in the City of Santa Rosa effective January 19th of this year, and that is manufacturing, and in particular, let's see if my cursor works here. Well, in particular, manufacturing level two, and I'll explain what that is and how that's different than level one, and how that fits in with our ordinance. So, before I get into the details of manufacturing level two, I wanted to highlight the general approach that the city took in terms of regulating cannabis. It is quite a permissive approach compared to other jurisdictions, and these are the reasons why. The city recognized that this is an industry that is in our community. They operated in either the black market or what is considered sort of the gray market, the medical market, where the state had allowances, but the city did not locally permit them. So, we wanted to move into the opportunity for these industries that are already within our community to legalize, potentially in place, but if not, to move them to appropriate locations. So I'll talk about why we ended up with the locations that we did for manufacturing. We do allow medical and adult use, and we had the benefit of interim measures for the last year and a half that allowed many of the land uses currently allowed in the comprehensive ordinance as a sort of pilot program to explore this new industry. Now, level two was not part of that interim measure, so that's new and effective January. I'll talk about the, we do have some applications in process now. So, in order to be transparent and successful in terms of educating our residents and our potential applicants in cannabis, we've set up this website, which is noted up there, srcity.org/cannabis. And that is where we put all of our program elements, so whether it's land use requirements or application tools, or if you are a resident, there's a residential cannabis page. There's a tax, page on taxation, and I believe there's links to code enforcement, things like that. But it's sort of a one-stop shop if you have questions about cannabis. So, one of those tools that we have up there for our community is this colored land use chart, because frankly, the zoning code is not vision-friendly, and I actually use this chart quite a bit, because it really boils down to all the different land uses that we do allow, and where are they located, and under what permit authority. So we reference this chart quite a bit. And I'm sorry, it's very small print, and I don't think I can get the cursor to work here, but towards the bottom of that chart, under support uses, you'll see manufacturing level one and two. So, I'll also speak to one of the comments that came in under public comments about where these land uses reside as a part of our comprehensive policy, and why. So, we have two types of manufacturing, and I'll go into more of the details of that, but we have a level one and a level two. Level one is either with no solvents or non-volatile solvents, and level two is with volatile. So there's a pretty clear distinction in terms of the level of intensity of these uses. And one of the things that the city employed in our philosophy in preparing the policy was to look for wherever we have, cannabis is a product, right? So, wherever a non-cannabis product is similarly manufactured or cultivated or processed, where do we allow them? And a point of consideration was to allow cannabis operations where their non-cannabis operation counterparts reside in the city. And so that's exactly what we did, with a little exception. So, for example, light manufacturing and processing is a land use classification for all things that aren't cannabis, but in that same umbrella of use. And that is allowed in three different zoning districts, and it's allowed in Business Park, Light Industrial, and General Industrial. And it's permitted by right in those districts, and the footnote three there is, it's permitted by right with one exception, if it is abutting a residential user district, then you need to go into a minor use permit process that allows for notification and conditioning. So, we placed light manufacturing of cannabis in the same categories under the same permit process. So, level two is a little different. We liken that to medium manufacturing or processing. That, if it's non-cannabis, is also not allowed in Business Park. So, we don't allow non-cannabis volatile manufacturing in Business Park. So, like you see here, we're not allowing the cannabis version of that either. But non-cannabis is allowed with a minor use permit in Light Industrial and General Industrial for cannabis volatile. We did elevate the permit authority to the planning commission to a conditional use permit process. And part of that was because we know that there's a lot of public interest in volatile manufacturing of cannabis. It's the ones we read about in the paper, and frankly, the major use permit process that requires a public hearing and requires the balancing of interests that you get with a planning commission is the type of permit process that the city council wanted. And so, that is the only exception, otherwise, we do treat cannabis manufacturing the same as non-cannabis manufacturing. So, in terms of the difference, level one, like I said, is using non-volatile solvents or no solvents. And so, some, the photos on the right are characteristics of what we have attracted in terms of this category. Actually, we have 16 approved manufacturers, cannabis manufacturers, not up in operation yet, but in terms of land use permits, we have 16 of those up and approved. And they, it's anywhere from putting cannabis flower into jars and putting labels on them, so that's considered more like processing, or with extraction involved to make tinctures or edibles. So all of that's in that family of non-volatile. And like I said, you haven't seen that land use, even though the city has approved 16 permits, because they're permitted by right or with a minor use permit if adjacent to residential. And so, there is some extraction in this category. It's not like it's, there's no extraction in the category, but it's low, it's, well, involves non-volatile solvents, and we'll get to that. So, level two, this is the ones that involves the volatile solvents. Because the state was changing left and right, then left and right again, we decided to, at this point, not list out solvents. Some jurisdictions went into that, and then they find themselves having to amend that, and then they had to find themselves amending that list again. So we decided not to list a specific list, like, though I think common solvents like hexane and butane are commonly on this list, but other elements like ethanol extraction was kind of coming in on and off the list. So instead of putting that on, we decided to defer to the state code. And my colleagues here, who I, I'm sorry, I did not introduce at the beginning of my presentation. And we have Mark Sederlin, who's a chief building official for the city, and Scott Moon, who's a fire marshal for the City of Santa Rosa. And they're here to also talk about the differences between these two categories, and how, what are the special protocols when you are dealing with volatile? And it's not necessarily just the listing, it's how you are using it. So, we already talked about some of this, the differences in that. Again, level two, much higher review process for the point of being transparent. We are making a big step with our comprehensive ordinance. It's a, we had interim measures, but now we're really into the phase of permitting more intensive cannabis land uses, and so, as part of this use permit process with the planning commission, if there are residences within 300 feet, then we do require that pre-application neighborhood meeting. And we have three use permits in process right now for this level of manufacturing. And I think two of them had to have a neighborhood meeting. So we are already starting the conversation. I have to say, I'm glad that we have this requirement, because it is definitely warrants a conversation with adjacent property owners, because their introduction to this land use is through the newspaper articles, and it hasn't been very favorable. So, part of the education is to talk about what we have in our ordinance and our fire codes and building codes to safeguard the city and how this works. So, you're familiar with the use permit process. There are six findings that you make. One of the points I wanted to make to you tonight is, we don't have special findings for cannabis. You have the same six findings that you make with any major use permit. But just as a reminder what those are for the public, compliance with the zoning code, and we do have a specific chapter that has specific standards for cannabis, but they need to meet all the other standards, parking and development standards. Consistency with the general plan, and as you know, there's a balancing act of general plan policies. And we, that is, that is your charge, is to balance those policies and make that finding. And then, compatibility with existing and future land uses. Another one is making sure that the use as proposed and conditioned is a fit for the site in the building. And also that the proposal as presented and conditioned, there's nothing there that we think will constitute a nuisance, and that we've addressed public health, safety, and welfare. And then, of course, lastly, because it's a discretionary action, and will be in accordance to your judgment, needs to be found in compliance with SEQA, or California Environmental Quality Act. So, the zoning code does have some proactive standards that we've set up for all cannabis land uses. It's not particular to manufacturing, though we'll get into those. That's another layer of regulations when we get into manufacturing, but all cannabis, commercial, scaled cannabis has to have a state license and their local land use permit. And they need to get all the other related permits before they operate. So, building permits, fire permits, all necessary inspections. And some of those inspections are before, during, and after. They need to get a business tax certificate. If they make edibles, they need a permit from the Sonoma County Health Department. Sonoma County Agus, if they have cultivation also on site, but most manufacturers do not, unless they are a special type called microbusiness. And then, most importantly, all, and all through this process to date, the Santa Rosa has been very proactive about setting very clear standards for security, odor, lighting, and noise, because those are, that's sort of what is different about the non-cannabis versus the cannabis of anything growing, making, or selling. People are worried about security, odor, and other impacts. So, we address those head-on in the zoning code, and so those are land use requirements. So that's the policy background, the land use setting. Now I'm going to turn it over to Mark, and we'll get more into the next phase, which is occupancy confirmations and what regulations are in place to safeguard the use. The land use is, is this the right land use for this site under these circumstances, under these conditions? And then, once we've decided that, then the next phase is to move into occupancy and fire protection.
So, thank you. In the process of processing permits through the whole system, there's two distinct parts of the system. There's the discretionary review that is in the case of volatile extraction in your purview. So you'll review the land use requirements, is it appropriate, all the stuff that Claire just went over. Once you make a determination that the use is appropriate, and you give your discretionary blessing, then it moves into what we call the ministerial permit review. This is the building and fire code permit review. And unlike the discretionary process that has some room for discretion, building and fire code permit has very little room for discretion. The building and fire codes are specific standards that are developed by the state, national organizations, and adopted by the city for specific application. And cannabis manufacturing, in some ways, is not that much different than other types of manufacturing that we routinely deal with. Some of them are a little more hazardous in a physical, an environmental, or maybe in a health sense. And there are specific requirements in the building and the fire codes that address these potential impacts to people who are within the buildings and in the general area. And these standards include, like I mentioned, the building and fire codes, OSHA standards, and independent laboratory like UL, or Warnock-Hirsey, or these established testing laboratories that look at equipment or components that are being installed in buildings. So, the volatile extraction of cannabis, like I mentioned, is similar to other occupancies that we routinely permit. Things like chemical manufacturing plants, auto body shops, paint booths, welding shops, food manufacturing facilities that might have a big high-pressure boiler. These have all similar explosion-type hazards that are associated with the volatile manufacturing of cannabis products. And in a lot of ways, we treat them no differently. We look at what they're proposing to do, and do they meet the level of safety established in the building and the fire codes? So, in looking at these permits, as Claire mentioned, one of the first things we do is we review the occupancy. Is the building, whether it's a new building proposed for construction or an existing building proposed for reuse, is that building, the way that it's constructed on the property, appropriate for the occupancy that is being established for the volatile manufacturing? They're also required to obtain all the necessary building and fire code permits. If there's any edibles associated with this, as Claire mentioned, the health department has to weigh in on this. Hazardous materials, all these volatile solvents that they're using fall under the hazardous material classification, and therefore require conformance with the state COOPA laws, which the fire department is our local COOPA authority. They enforce that. They're also required to comply with the California Environmental Reporting System requirements, which also the fire department monitors. So, we also ensure that they, oops, I'm sorry. We also ensure that there's adequate access for fire department and emergency personnel if there should be an incident at the site. So, level-two manufacturing, the real critical issue is extraction. The horror stories that you've heard in the newspaper about blow-ups of garages and small occupancies, where people have been doing this process in an unsafe manner. They are what create all the headlines, and for real and obvious reasons, exhibits the hazard that exists. However, properly constructed, properly designed, constructed, and inspected, and certified, these systems are no more hazardous than you would find in a paint booth in an auto body shop or a chemical manufacturing plant. We require here in the city that all extraction systems be what's called a closed-loop system, so that unless there is an accident, the materials used in the process are never exposed to the general environment of the room other than as necessary to fill the reservoir. Under the processing of this equipment, it's a closed system, and that absolutely minimizes the exposure to the people in there. So, moving on to the next one. So, the building and fire code permit process includes building code review, fire code review, electrical review. There's hazardous locations require a much higher level of electrical installation to minimize the possibility of fires or explosions from faulty electrical wiring or ungrounded electrical wiring. There's substantial mechanical code requirements to make sure adequate ventilation, and if there is an event, that the room can be quickly evacuated of environmental air. And a part of these mechanical systems include robust detection systems within the ducts themselves to ensure additional safety. Plumbing code requirements are in place to make sure that if there is any spills... Plumbing code requirements are in place to make sure that if there is any spills in the room, that they're properly contained and dealt with until emergency personnel can come onboard. And then, of course, energy requirements to minimize the use of energy, to be as efficient as possible, and then sustainable construction and building in the Cal Green requirement. I should add that the State of California State Fire Marshal realized early on that this was a substantial hazard. And so they just recently completed and adopted a new chapter in the fire code specifically addressing extraction systems using volatile materials. So during this permit process, in addition to the standard building permit, these occupancies are subject to annual Fire Department review and approval of their operations. The standard occupancies associated with this type of manufacturing are limited to B, which is a standard business. That's usually the office component of the facility. F1 is a moderate hazard fabrication and manufacturing classification. S is a storage, often there's a storage component of this. And then, in some occasions where the materials that they're using exceed allowable limits, they are required to comply with what we call H occupancy or hazardous occupancies, which have a much higher level of fire and life safety requirements associated with them. One of the real key components of this new Chapter 38 in the fire code is that volatile manufacturing is prohibited from being in the same building as an assembly occupancy, an educational occupancy, an institutional occupancy or a residential occupancy. We want to make sure that the public that would be most impacted by these are nowhere near this. And for the most part, in the zoning districts that we allow volatile manufacturing, it's highly unlikely you're going to see any one of those assembly occupancies or a residential occupancy. Once in a while, you might find a warehouse church in one of these, but that would be the only one that might be close to this. Most importantly, the extraction equipment itself has to undergo rigorous scrutiny by the Building Department, the Fire Department, but also an independent, outside-certified, licensed professional engineer has to review the design of all equipment and has to provide a field certification for all the equipment as installed. And we will not issue occupancy until that third-party specialist has certified that equipment. We require, as a condition of the annual Fire Department permit, that that certification be renewed annually by a licensed, qualified professional engineer and be made available to the Fire Department annually when they do their inspections. So having said that, yes, there is some exposure, some safety and health hazards potentially with this occupancy, but it's real, if it's done properly, inspected properly and maintained properly, it's really no more hazardous than a lot of other types of occupancies we deal with in our city and in other cities around us. So with that, I'll turn it back to Claire for any further comments or questions.
Great, thank you.
We're all here for questions, if you have them.
Okay. I think that we will take public comments before we ask commissioners if they have any questions for staff. So I do have one card on this item, but you don't need to have filled out a card if you want to speak. And the card I have is for Karen Woodson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Karen Woodson. I'm the Compliance Director with Spark. We're a vertically integrated operation here in Sonoma County. We cultivate, manufacture and conduct retail operations for cannabis. I wanted to echo the previous speaker's comments about trying to get the Commission to support a study to authorize manufacturing Level 2 in business park zoning. I think, as you've heard through the presentation tonight, the word volatile is a term of art and it concerns the particular types of solvents used, not necessarily the nature of the process. And as you heard tonight, any danger associated with the use or storage of these solvents is mitigated by existing law and regulation. Unlike other light or heavy manufacturing activities, cannabis manufacturers are held to an occupational hazard fire safety standards that no other, and I can't stress this enough, no other consumer product manufacturer faces. Regulations already require extensive mitigation regardless of the type of manufacturing activity. The structure of those regulations, which sets a safety standard that removes any material difference between Level 1 and Level 2 operators. So with that in mind, and understanding that risk mitigation for manufacturing Level 2 operations in BP zones would include but not be limited to building code standards that isolate the processing rooms, that have high-volume HVAC systems meeting NPFA 91 and 30 standards, gas solvent detectors, static electricity mitigation protocols, and of course, an annual review. So these type of activities would also be subject to conditional use. That wouldn't change. They would still be subject to neighborhood notification and planning commission review. And each application would be evaluated based on the entire building's use. The business park zone exists within the City of Santa Rosa's definitions of industrial zoning, and as long as the internal operations for the extraction process is properly conditioned and designed to provide the highest level of safety, there's absolutely no reason or justification to entirely exclude Level 2 manufacturing from the BP zone. So with that in mind, and like I said, the comments offered by a previous speaker, I'm respectfully requesting that this Commission consider the study, whether it's appropriate and they should authorize Level 2 manufacturing in the BP zone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other cards for the study session. If anybody else wishes to speak, please go to one of the podiums. I'm not seeing anybody, so I'm going to bring it back to the Commission. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Vice Chair Weeks?
How, excuse me, how often are the inspections by the Fire Department? I know it's an annual certification, but will you be inspecting more often than once a year?
Yes, the Fire Department incorporated into the last annual, or triennial, fire code adoption, annual inspection permits, operational permits for these types of uses that we've just discussed. So at minimum, we'll be in once a year. And then, if they have hazardous materials that kick in the COOPA program requirements that are in excess of state thresholds, then we'll be in every three years to focus on that program specifically as well. So at minimum, once a year.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rongegaard?
Yes, thank you. I have a few questions here. First of all, this sounds like largely a code enforcement issue, both for building and for public safety, Fire Department, the inspections and so on. And they have to meet state standards, it sounds like. A number of questions come to mind, though. I'll start with frequency of use, training of the people who are going to be operating Level 2 systems. Does that come under your purview as well?
Indirectly, it does. I referred to Chapter 38 of the California Fire Code, this new chapter that governs volatile occupancies, that codifies this requirement for this professional engineer to review the design and certify in the field this equipment. In order for this engineer to provide his design approval and certification, they have to address 14 points that are specifically included in the code language in the chapter. And two of those 14 address training, quality control and safety programs that have to be developed prior to the submittal of the building permit so that safety and training program is a part of the original submittal and is a part of the certification that's in place and is part of what the Fire Department reviews during their annual Fire Department review. So although the Building Department specifically doesn't provide a deep dive into that review, the independent third-party professional engineer certifying the equipment does.
And then, part of the permitting process, I assume that would it be the Fire Department or Building Department would require signage on the side of the building indicating that there's volatile chemicals in that building and that... Just stop there.
Just to step back a moment and address the training requirements that you asked of, specific to the California Health and Safety Code, if there are amounts, or amounts rather, of chemicals that warrant training elements, then we would inspect that and verify with the site that they have training procedures in place that deal with storage use and handling of either the hazardous materials itself or the waste that is generated through their manufacturing process. So we would be looking at that on an annual basis with them as well as on that triennial basis. With regard to signage and labeling of buildings, there are specific requirements of the California Fire Code that we address during the operational portion or acceptance of the operation and would require those to be maintained through the life of the business.
Okay, okay. Couple more questions. The city, as it should be, is often risk averse in terms of wanting to make certain that we are protecting not only land, but the people that are inside the buildings and the public that may be coming by. Now, there's indication in here that there are neighborhood meetings required prior to the bringing forward a proposal, I guess, back to the planning commission, whatever it may be. How are those people notified to attend? And are there any requirements related to notifying schools that may be, public and private schools, that may be within, say, 500 to 1,000 feet? And then also, should there be any differential for, say, between Level 2 use facility and a Level 1 use facility if they're separate in terms of how close they should be to the public if there is a risk there? And then, I guess the final question might be for Claire on this, or Ashley, would be when in the future we come out with a new proposal and the neighborhood is notified, in that public hearing notice, would there be an indication that Level 2 processes would be used, the chemicals and so on?
Okay, I'm going to try to answer the first couple of questions. So the pre-application neighborhood meeting notice, as well as the subsequent public hearing notice that would attach to the conditional use permit, these noticing processes are the very same for other applicants. So we don't have a special set of procedures or a different way we measure how far out we conduct the notice or the manner in which we conduct the notice. We don't have any different requirements for cannabis application. So just to remind what that process is, for all applicants undergoing a major use permit, the neighborhood meeting notice is a mailed notice currently. It goes out to 400 feet radius of the parcel. It goes to property owners. The conditional use permit public hearing notice is a notice in the newspaper. It's a blue onsite sign and it's, in addition, it's the 400-foot mailing notice. Another question was about sensitive uses within, I'm sorry.
On the public hearing notice, when we get to that level, would it, in the notice, would you have that the public hearing would be about a facility that is going to be using Level 2 procedures?
Yes, sorry, I missed that. So the content of the notice would be like other land uses and since volatile is the land use request, we will make sure that that's in the project description and that goes out in the notice. And that is what, that element is what makes this a unique land use, so we'd be sure to include that. Another question that you had was about sensitive uses and how might a school be notified? And I think also sensitivity to residential uses in the area. Again, no particular different noticing process for these applications. They go according to our standard notification processes. And then, so that's part of it. So if there's a school within the vicinity, they would have that same manner of notice that they hear of other non-cannabis applications. There are no required setbacks for manufacturing uses, so they, if, and we do have this in certain areas of our city where you might have a light industrial right bordering up to a residential district or to a school. But after much debate over the last year and a half, we did not land on specific setback requirements for manufacturing uses. So that situation can occur, but what happens is there's a notification and a public conversation process about it. So if you're a non-volatile, it triggers that minor use permit. If you're adjacent a residential, which has notice and an opportunity for a public hearing should a resident wish for one. For the Level 2, you are already looking at a public hearing process and a pre-application neighborhood meeting. So those are the safeguards for those uses.
Any other member of the Commission with a question for staff?
Could I add a setback comment to your question? That the building and fire codes do contain specific setback requirements based on different type of occupancies to the property line. And so manufacturing occupancies and hazardous occupancies typically require a little bit greater setbacks than standard business park or business use. And if an applicant proposes to be closer to that, there's pretty extensive additional fire protection and opening protection requirements. So the building and fire codes do address specific safety hazards relative to the building on the property line, not necessarily to a school or something away from the property line, but the building codes do address the setback issues as a function of the safety. Thank you.
Commissioner Francisco?
I'm wondering, Claire, if you could respond to the two requests from the public about what would have to happen, where we are now and what would have to happen if we were to entertain opening up the volatile to business park?
Well, initially in my presentation, I did talk about why we considered but rejected the idea of putting volatile in the business parks. And again, that's because the non-cannabis counterparts to that level of land use is also not allowed in business parks. So we didn't want to create something where cannabis uses were of that nature, were invited to a district where we don't allow others. So it's a bigger question if that land use in general, cannabis or otherwise, is suitable for business park, we should probably look at it comprehensively. And so, and then the process by which to amend the ordinance is like amending any ordinance in our zoning code is, requires, it could be an individual applying for that text amendment and they pay that fee, that processing fee to process a text amendment. It goes through a public hearing process with the Planning Commission and City Council. That happens from time to time, but because it's not, it's not an inexpensive process to take on and it would be a citywide amendment, so it garners a broad conversation, not just with an individual applicant. The other option is that the City Council initiates that amendment. And I want to remind everyone that we're in the sort of next phase of this, this is kind of the first phase of the cannabis program is getting this policy up and running, but we, and this took 20 subcommittee meetings with the cannabis subcommittees comprised of three council members. And that committee still meets and is part of the next phase, which is monitoring how this is going and checking in with issues that arise. So we actually have a couple of other issues that are in sort of discussion status, if you will, at the subcommittee level. And if there's, garners enough interest or support or we have a collection of amendments that we'd like to do, they would probably recommend to the to the city council, the city council would decide if they want to put staff resources to amending or updating the ordinance. So as an avenue for the public, or people who want to seek amendments, that would be a good venue for them to speak to, is the cannabis subcommittee meetings, and they meet generally monthly, I think it's the last Thursday of the month, and that information's on our website.
Commissioner Macalio?
Looking at the land use and permit required by zones, is this correct that agricultural product processing is currently not allowed in business parks as well?
You're looking at a broader category, or something that's, you're looking at a different chart than this?
Yes, I am.
And what's your question?
That currently agricultural product processing, that is not allowed in business parks currently, I just want to confirm that. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? I just wanted to ask quickly about whether anybody can comment on the levels of danger between a perfectly compliant type-one versus a perfectly compliant type-two. You know, all else being equal, is it the case that the level-two perfectly compliant would be no more dangerous than the level-one that's perfectly compliant, or is that overstating things a little bit?
I would have to say that overstates it a little bit. With the level-one, you're typically focused on your non-volatile solvents, with the exception of the ethyl alcohol that's introduced for winterization or post-extraction process, and you're typically dealing with ingredients such as compressed gas, CO2, or carbon dioxide that's introduced into their processing. So you may have oxygen-deficient environments that could result with the level-one and a non-volatile-type environment, but with the level-two, you're introducing such items as Claire had mentioned, with the butane, the hexane, propane, there's various flammable constituents associated with that. And as Mark had mentioned, there's specific engineering requirements, therefore, that would need to be met within that environment, specific to electrical equipment. So we have appropriate electrical that's not exposed to the potential for ignition or explosion within that environment. So the hazard does present a greater level of concern within the level-two, based on the utilization of the particular medium that's introduced for that processing. So I hope that addresses your question.
Yeah, that was an excellent explanation.
So I can add one small addendum to that, that that's not to say that level-one does not have its hazard exposures to it. As Scott mentioned, one of the preferred level-one extraction systems uses high-pressure CO2. And some of the designs of equipment use really high-pressure CO2. And even though there's not a conflagration or exposure, explosion potential associated with that, if there is a mechanical breakage in the system, high pressure, whether it's CO2, or air, or nitrogen, or any other compressed gas, could develop into a hazard where the equipment breaks apart and things fly. So there's, there is some physical hazard associated with level-one, but there's really no explosion hazards associated with level-one.
Great. And then, quickly about the fire and building codes, and the setback that's based on the land use that's not in the zoning code, but it's in those codes, is that determined by engineers and experts to sort of think about, if the worst-case scenario were to occur, how far away does that land use and that structure need to be to keep any negative effects contained within that facility and not affect neighboring properties? Is that the thought behind those kinds of setbacks?
No, not directly. The setbacks are tabular issues in the building code. And I should preface this, and maybe I was remiss in not mentioning this before, that all building permit submissions are required to be prepared, stamped, and certified by a qualified licensed design professional. Architector, engineers, and usually both are involved in all of these submittals. And so it's generally the designer, often the architect's responsibility, to look at the size of the building, the type of construction of the building, and the occupancy, which in this case would be an F1 or a H hazardous occupancy. And based on the size, type of construction, and occupancy, they go into tables in the building code, and there it stipulates what the setback will be. So there's no subjective input from the designer that says, "Well, I don't think this is that hazardous, so I'm gonna make it this close." There's minimums in the building code. Now, if the design professional decides he wants to be more conservative, and he wants to say 20 feet is not enough, I want to make it 30 feet, they're well within their, the purview of their design to do that. But specifically setbacks are tabular items in the building code.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, I think that'll end the study session. I really appreciate the staff effort to put this together, and the fire marshal, and the chief building official for helping us with all that technical information, really very helpful for us, so thanks very much. And with that, I'll just wait a minute here for people to get where they need to be. And next, we're going to move on to consent items. This is item nine of the agenda. We're learning a new procedure for these tonight, or at least I am, so I'm gonna ask everybody to bear with us as we go through this. Item 9.1 is the Southwest Estates Tentative Map Time Extension, and item 9.2 are the Shops at Austin Creek Tentative Map Extension Request. I'm gonna ask the deputy director to read the items and the resolutions, please.
All right, so item 9.1 is Southwest Estates Tentative Map Time Extension. The resolution before you is a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa granting a one-year extension of time for the Southwest Estates Tentative Map located at 533 Bellevue Avenue, file number PRJ17-055. Item 9.2 is Shops at Austin Creek Extension of Time. This is a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa granting a one-year extension of time for the Shops at Austin Creek Tentative Map at 5171 and 5173 Sonoma Highway, Assessor's Parcels number 183410058, and 183410060, file number PRJ17-060, extension 17-064.
Thank you very much. The public are invited to comment on consent items. I don't have any cards for either of these items, but if any member of the public is here wishing to speak on this, on either item, would you please approach the microphones and state your name and which item you're commenting on? And I'm seeing nobody approached the podiums, so I'm going to ask a member of the commission to make a motion on the consent agenda to move items 9.1 through 9.2 on the consent calendar. Is any commissioner willing to make the motion?
Chair Edmondson, I'll make that motion, that we approve items 9.1 and 9.2 under the consent agenda.
And wait for the reading.
And wait for the reading? Well, didn't you wait for the reading?
Do I have a second?
That's good, and I'll say that next time.
Okay.
Okay, that was moved by Commissioner Sisco and seconded by Commissioner Duggan, and your votes, please. And those items pass, seven votes to zero. And with that, we are done with our consent calendar, and we move on to item 10. Item 10.1 is the Verizon Wireless Telecommunications Facility at 122 Baker Avenue, and as I mentioned earlier at the beginning of the meeting, we do have a memo from staff recommending a continuance of this item to a date uncertain. Is any member of the department wishing to make a little comment on that, to tell the public what that memo summarizes?
So the memo dated May 3rd conveys the applicant's request for a continuation to a date uncertain, pending project revisions. The applicant is continuing to work on revisions to comply with his current zoning code.
Okay, so if the project were to come back before the planning commission, if we were to continue it and it came back before us, there would be new notice given out to all of the people who would have been entitled to notice before, although, in theory, if the project is cited differently, then maybe additional people or different people would get notice, it would depend on the project at that time?
That's correct. Okay, so you would receive a mailed notice, there would be the published notice, as well as the onsite signage.
Okay. Is any member of the commission wanting to make a motion to continue this item to a date uncertain?
I make a motion that we continue this item to a date uncertain.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, that was moved by Vice Chair Weeks and seconded by Commissioner Gronika. Any discussion? And your votes, please. And that passes with seven ayes. And with that, we will move to item 10.2, the Resilient City Building Envelopes and Setbacks: Certificates of Correction, citywide. This is a public hearing, but not an ex parte disclosure. And my agenda says Bill Rose, but I don't see Mr. Rose here, so I will ask a staff member giving the presentation to identify him herself.
So this is Amy Nicholson, city planner.
And as people exit, I just want to thank people for their patience, and appreciate everybody making the effort to come out here. We do appreciate that.
Wow, that was quite a crowd.
Thank you, Chair Edmondson, and members of the commission. Before you is a proposal to remove references to building envelopes and setbacks from existing subdivision final maps in the areas identified as Fountain Grove and Coffee Park within the Resilient City combining district. The proposed action would eliminate conflicts with zoning and provide for flexibility in rebuilding while maintaining the protections of the zoning code. Building envelopes and setbacks are not components of final maps presently, however, prior to 1987, final maps throughout the city were regularly recorded with this information. The Subdivision Map Act was amended in 1987, requiring that information that does not affect the title to be on a separate sheet, thus making it for information purposes only and not enforceable. The city subsequently adopted an ordinance consistent with the state law that I just mentioned. And so this proposal would make these maps consistent with current state and city law. This is a general plan and zoning map for the Greater Coffee Park area, and as you can see from the yellow color, the majority of the area is designated low-density residential under the general plan, and has the zoning of R16, which is the city's standard single-family residential zoning, in addition to plan developments which implement the single-family use. This is a general plan and zoning map of the Fountain Grove area as identified by the Resilient City ordinance. It also includes Hidden Valley. And the areas affected here are also single-family residential, although because some lots are a little bit larger, they have kind of a lighter yellow-green shade, and then they have the implementing zoning district of rural residential and accompanying standard, or accompanying plan developments, excuse me. So this proposal would allow development consistent with the city zoning, and would not increase any residential density on these sites. This is a graphic of the Coffee Park area showing the subdivision maps that could be affected by this proposal, bound by the blue line, and these are maps that were recorded prior to 1987, so they include those references to setbacks and building envelopes. The same is the case here for the Fountain Grove area and Hidden Valley areas. So as you can see, there's much of the area that was damaged by the fires that would not be impacted by this proposal, because the maps were recorded after 1987. The proposal has been reviewed in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, and has been found exempt pursuant to the two sections shown on the screen, in that the proposal would facilitate rebuilding after a state-declared disaster. I'm gonna hand it off to Gabe to speak for a moment.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Gabe Osborne, Deputy Director of Development Services. So the next half of the presentation, because this is a very technical piece, we'll get into some of the detail and show some of the different examples, because they are different throughout the three distinct areas, which are Hidden Valley, Fountain Grove, and Coffee Park. So the first map we see is Coffee Creek Estates, and this is really the map that brought this whole issue to our attention many months ago. So as we can see in this map, there are parcel lines shown, which are the bigger squares, and inside that, we see what we refer to as building envelopes. So that basically carved off a line around the existing footprint, and there are notations on this map that say that the envelope shall act as the setback. So in this situation, the property owner has no ability to expand that home, and that became problematic, because current code is expanding wall thickness, which basically means to build back the same home they had, they had to reduce the interior square footage. So we knew we needed to do something in that situation, so the map was the only thing that really prohibited against it. In this situation, those dashed lines will go away if the certificate is recorded, and this will revert back to really the basic zoning to determine what those setbacks are. And typically in this situation, a little different based on the zoning, Coffee Park is mostly honoring 15-foot setbacks in the front and back, and side foot setbacks, or excuse me, side yard setbacks, five-foot side yard setbacks. So this is an example of the Coffee Park situation that is fairly extreme. The next slide is an example of a Fountain Grove map. So we can see in this situation, once again, it has an envelope concept, meaning the map shows front yard and side yard setbacks, as well as back. And in this situation, if those are removed, it won't result in much of a change, because those setbacks are governed by the zoning, as well as conditions of approval. So what we can see towards the top, there is an additional setback that creates a buffer from Fountain Grove Parkway, things of that nature, even if this is removed from the map, will have to remain, because those were conditions of approval with the original development. So what we'll see in this situation is very little change if that certificate is processed. The third is Hidden Valley, and it is a little difficult to see on this, I do apologize for that, some of the quality of the older maps are a little difficult to reproduce. But this is an example that is fairly prevalent in Hidden Valley, and the only setback shown on the map is the front yard setback. So in this situation, without removing anything, side yards and rear setbacks would be based on the zoning code. The front yard setback in this situation is shown as being fairly aggressive, some of them show 24, 25 feet. The maps in the past actually measured the setback from a different area, they were commonly measured from the property line, which could be curb or the front of the sidewalk. Currently today, they are measured from the back of the sidewalk. So when we do the math and look at how they're measured, a 15-foot setback measured from the back of the sidewalk typically equals what we're seeing on the map. So there's very little difference in these situations. We have identified this because of the corner lots. Those are the ones that are impacted by this the most. They technically front on two roads, the setbacks have a tendency to be pretty aggressive on the side yard. So in this situation, there would be a little massaging of that if we remove the side yard setback to gain setback to gain a little width on these lots. So the next slide will dive into some of the potential impacts. So we have heard some concerns about how setbacks change the fabric of neighborhood, and I know it is a very sensitive topic. In this situation, we do not envision there being much change other than the severe situation of Coffee Creek Estates and similar types of developments. And that is mainly due to the fact that the map really does not govern setbacks. These were more or less placed on the map for reference purposes. And as Ms. Nicholson mentioned, in 87, there was an action to remove those from the maps. We now put them on informational sheets that are clearly for informational purposes only, and they do not affect the title. So really, it keeps it consistent with the remaining area that doesn't have these issues on the map. So the proposed development also receives additional review. So from our permit process standpoint, our simplest track is if you're going back to the same footprint, same foundation. If you're changing the footprint where the setbacks become a little more of an issue, there is more review that goes into that, and that's really on the planning front. So that gives us the opportunity to dive into the conditions of approval and make sure that the development is still consistent. So now the benefits obviously allows flexibility in some situations to rebuild fire damaged homes. What we've said along in this process, if people want to rebuild one of the silver linings is let them have a little flexibility to rebuild how they want. And we've been trying to achieve that in various ways. So this will potentially allow a lot of individuals in the Coffee Park area to take advantage of some of the developer-sponsored master plans. Those are set floor plans, and they're a certain width. So it really is boiling down to if they can't get the width, they can't make it work. And many people are seeing that potentially as offering a lower per square foot price. So we're looking at potentially creating a little flexibility there. It also gives a little more leeway to encourage the development accessory dwelling units, especially the type that involve an increase in the footprint and an internal conversion of that space. So the next steps, and this is an important piece, is the city engineer will conduct a detailed review of each and every map. And although we want to create the flexibility of recording the certificate across the board and make it transparent, it may not be needed in some of these situations. We've received about 360 applications, and as we see those applications, we're able to interpret what people want to do. So in the absence of that application, it's very difficult to determine if ultimately this is an issue or not. So as neighborhoods start to develop more, we'll see these issues probably come to the forefront a little more, and we want the flexibility to address it in a very short period of time because we know it is important to get this moving for a lot of people, so we want to lay this out. As part of that process, it doesn't mean that we can't have more public input later on down the line because it affects so many maps. Normally, we would have a very truncated focused public hearing for something like this that would only pertain to the individual subdivisions. So now we're having a very bigger discussion about multiple subdivisions. It gets down to some of these that are a little more problematic, or maybe the setbacks were reduced a little more. We are open to having those discussions with the property owners. So we attend many public meetings. We hear about this on a regular basis. We're actively involved with the Coffee Strong group. So as these come up, we just want the flexibilities to respond or not if it doesn't fix the situation. So I think the important piece to this is the city engineer, as this really pencils out later on down the line, may not be recording certificates across the board. We just want the flexibility to be able to do that. And the last point, it is a separate certificate for each subdivision. So there is not one certificate that addresses everything. It's going to be a separate recorded document for each subdivision that's recorded with the property, tracks with title, so it's clear that the setbacks were moved long-term. So that really closes the presentation. So I'd like to finalize by simply restating our recommendation, and that is to recommend that the city engineer execute and record the proposed certificates of correction, removing references to building envelopes and setbacks on subdivision final maps within the Coffee Park and Fountain Grove resilient city zones. And at this point, we can open up to any questions you may have.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions at this time for staff? Yes, Commissioner Duggan.
Yeah, I have one for Mr. Osborne. You just mentioned that you're not necessarily going to record certificates for every subdivision map. So what happens in that case going forward? Those building envelopes just stay on the map and then because the houses are going to be rebuilt using those envelopes?
So that's an excellent question. So in the extreme situation of the building envelopes where there are very restrictive and can increase square footage, we will be recording those. So that's the worst-case scenario. And some of those other examples we exposed that pretty much are Hidden Valley, where basically recording the certificate does not change anything. So the allowances on the map are very similar to the standard zoning. We likely won't. It's all based on process. If it turns out in that map that the corner lots need to be fixed, we can always record a certificate that just affects the corner lots. So the problem is that we just don't know what the development proposals are across the board yet. So if it's an issue, we want to be able to respond to it, but we just don't know if the current setbacks, especially what's shown on the map, don't work for what the property owners want to do.
Vice Chair Weeks.
Gabe, you indicated that if, let's see, it's on, actually, let me find the slide. Slide number 13, that proposed development varying from previous construction would receive additional review. Can you describe what that additional review would be?
Absolutely. So in the rebuild, we've really created three different tracks. One is you basically go back in the same footprint, same floor plan, really straightforward. You're just doing code upgrades. That's the most streamlined process. The second is you're basically going back in the same footprint with slight interior changes, moving a kitchen around. That takes a little more architectural review. And the third is that you're increasing the footprint or spatially moving the foundation around. And all of a sudden, that gets into a planning issue as far as conditions of approval and setbacks. So basically, our consultant team that manages the Permit Rebuild Center has a consultant staff, so it adds that layer of review on the site plan to determine that they're in the setbacks, to determine that they're consistent with the conditions of approval. So it doesn't necessarily take a process and make it three to four months. It potentially adds days on to that. So it's just another layer of review. We can no longer give it to just the building plans examiner. There's a planner that's reviewing the proposal as well.
Commissioner Peterson.
So I have kind of a broad philosophical question and then maybe a little bit more specific one. As we look at these setbacks, what is the kind of underpinning of the purpose of having the setback at all? Is it a health and safety nuisance light? Is it aesthetic? Can you go into that?
To clarify, the setbacks existing in the zoning code or on the face of the map?
Just the basic idea of requiring a setback at all. Yeah.
Sure. So setbacks help to make spaces a little bit more livable. They can provide additional privacy, add for lighting, and break up building masses so that there's some maybe interest or I guess that kind of summarizes it.
Okay. And so if we bring these existing setbacks in line with the zoning code, it seems to me, you have to tell me, the question is, is it fair to say that this allows the property owners to more fully utilize their own property to make determinations about how to use their own property?
Yes, that is correct. It would allow for property owners to build to existing city zoning, which every other property owner that does not have a recorded final map like this is able to do.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, this item is a public hearing. I do have one card on the item. I'm going to open the public hearing, and the card that I have is Mr. Fred Levin.
Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Fred Levin. I, my property was at 3554 Brookdale Drive in the upper Hidden Valley Estates area. It's gone. We're staying with my daughter, thankfully. But I had a question about the setbacks. The city could not provide myself or a number of our neighbors with plans and specs of the old facility. So therefore, we had to design a new facility. In this case, a one-story facility because we're getting old and we can't climb steps as well as we used to. At any rate, it will be a few, well, about 150 square feet larger than the previous site. In order to design a comfortable house, we'd like to see the setbacks reduced a bit. I think ours is currently 25 feet, five and five on the side. My neighbors are in the same predicament. We all have lots that are about 7,000 to 9,000 square feet. It's important for us to have enough space to build a house that we can, again, move into and enjoy. We would like to see some flexibility in the Hidden Valley Estates area, such as you've done for Coffee Park, which is correct. So please take under consideration some flexibility in allowing us to design a house which is livable in our community, which we love. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is any other member of the public wishing to speak on this item? Yes, sir. If you'll just start off your comments by stating your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Tom Yocoi. I'm also from the Hidden Valley area and on a corner lot, and many people are talking about that. But before I start, I just want to make a comment that the chair made. I was on the VPU for nine years in 90s, and I agree that it's nicer to see people close up when you are on that side of the podium, on that side of the stand. But as a speaker out here, I would rather be up here.
Fair enough.
So I'm glad to be up here. My wife Diane and I lived at 3501 Deer Park Drive, which is at the corner of Sleepy Hollow and Deer Park Drives. We were neighbors with the previous gentleman. He lived a block away. The proposed certificate of correction will help us because the shape of our parcel, because of the shape of our parcel, the Pollen Creek Storm Drain Channel passes through the back of our property at an angle which limits the size of our buildable space. Our original one-story house, which was purchased in October of 1973, had only a square footage of 1,400 square foot. After three additions, including two that included second stories, our house had a final area of 2,800 square feet. This is for a family of five. We have, I have a unique tie to the additions because as a registered civil engineer, I designed the additions and was happy to see them built. After living 44 years in our house almost to the day, the wildfire destroyed our house in hours. However, we are one of the lucky ones because our Karna House was the last house in our back, in our block, to be destroyed. And all the house, although the house was a total loss, a lot of the firefighters were trying to save the house and were able to save a lot of the outside improvements and landscaping. Houses on our side of the street to the north were totally destroyed. Houses both across the street, across both streets of our corner lot were not harmed. We are planning to rebuild a new one-story house because, again, because of our age, we don't want stairs. The neighborhood is great and because we have most of our outside improvements to return to. I also have the unique tie to the outdoor improvements because I designed them and constructed many of them. Diane and I would appreciate your approval of the proposed certificate of correction so we may have a little more buildable space on our parcel for our one-story retirement house. Thank you.
Thank you. Is any other member of the public wishing to speak? Please state your name for the record.
My name's James Barth.
My name is Joan Mortensen.
I'm so sorry. I'm going to recognize you first, sir.
My name's James Barth. I'm at Quill Ridge subdivision, and I think this is a great idea. My neighbors may talk quite a few times about surveys. We can't figure out how the surveyor put his lines where they are now. Any kind of a benefit to move things a little bit will allow us to straighten up our houses to the street. A little jog like that would be really helpful. And of course, all our houses have to be a little bit bigger now, like everybody's saying, to fit in. A few feet would really help. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, now, ma'am, if you'll state your name.
Hi, my name is Joan Mortensen, and I lived at 3352 Sansone Court. And that was on the first map you saw that had restrictive setback issues. Our houses were small. They are either 1,056 or 1,097 square feet. Many of us would like to add on a small quantity, to add on some square footage, as would I. So we've been waiting for about four months for this item to come up, to be fixed. It's been a tough four months. We loved our houses. It was a great, small community. And personally, I am building 100 square feet outside the footprint. I'm also closing in a breezeway, which would increase my square footage 200 square feet. So I really want to encourage you to, to go for this amendment and make it easy for us to get back to our homes and to make it easier for us to get bigger homes. We miss our homes a lot.
Great, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
My name's Jim Henderson. I'm a local architect, and I'm involved in a few fire rebuild projects. And I think this is a great idea, but my one question or concern is, based on my experience working in some of these areas in Coffee Park, there are some final map or planned developments that allow second stories to be within the five-foot setback and not restricted to 10 feet at the second story. And for some of these people who have the narrow lots, you know, their house is only 35 feet wide, if they're going to try to do a second story, would the removal of these building envelope lines also mean changing that planned development document in those few areas that allow two-story homes within five feet of the property line and make it revert back to the restrictive R16, five feet, single-story, 10 feet, two-story? Thank you.
Thank you. And ma'am, if you'll state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Allen. I currently live in Coffee Creek Estates, the map you see here. My house is one of about 12 or so that are still standing, and many of my neighbors who lost their homes are here today. And I just wanted to thank Gabe and everyone working with him for working so hard to help everyone in Coffee Creek Estates and in the other areas with loss. Speaking from having a home that's still standing, and I can definitely say that the suggestions and wishes of the residents who lost their homes are entirely reasonable in terms of this breezeway that you hear so much about in Coffee Creek Estates. And just extending out the house to what would really be a normal-looking house, our houses, I don't know who developed them, but at any rate, it's nothing extreme that we're asking for, for our small community. And I would actually also share the same concern, just referencing our small community in terms of having a second story. I don't know that that would be best for our little area, but mostly just wanted to thank you guys for bringing this to everyone's attention and trying to get it done.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else wishing to speak on this item? And seeing nobody else rise, I'm going to close the public hearing and follow up with staff on some of those concerns. A couple of them are a little bit related, which is a little bit more explanation about what is the regime going to be now for setbacks. Concern that taking this action would actually reduce the ability of certain parcels to build out closer to the property line. And then also for people who still find themselves thinking that the setbacks per the code are too restrictive even after this action, what sort of ability would those property owners have to build the project that they desire notwithstanding that? So if we could just hear a little bit of comment on those concerns?
Apologize, absolutely. I will handle a few of those and likely hand it over to my
I will handle a few of those and likely hand it over to my planning compadres over here to discuss the overall change of the setbacks. So the challenging piece in the rebuild of the fire areas, there's a lot of documents that govern various things, and setbacks are probably the most critical because that creates the box that people have to stay in. So we have the standard zoning, but the planned development documents were very prevalent in Coffee Park, and that's custom zoning for each subdivision, and they're all slightly different. And some of them do allow you to maintain the five-foot setback on a second story. Those are in the planned development documents. So if we remove this setback on the map, the planned development documents do not go away. We still have the ability to navigate through those. That came up in one of the first emergency ordinances that was presented to the council on how we can kind of navigate through the planned development aspect of it. So if they were able to do that under the planned development document, they still will have that ability. That is not going away. If it wasn't in the planned development document, we have to rely on the standard zoning, which in a lot of situations doesn't allow for that. It wants to maintain the 10-foot setback on the second story. So it really is a mixed bag, and I know that is a little problematic, especially for the design professionals. So to combat that, and this decision today is really a move in the direction to be able to do that, is we're looking at what an individual's least restrictive option is and saying that's your setback. If you want to go more restrictive than that, that's fine, but overall, we're just presenting that, okay, the first story has setbacks on the side and in the back, and the secondary, the second story, excuse me, has the same thing. And what are those? And we're publishing them in a public portal. So once we get this piece squared away, then we'll have that information where it's very transparent. There will be some differences lot to lot based on those planned development documents, but overall, we won't necessarily have the confusion that people are experiencing now navigating through the setback issue.
Okay, great. And then just with regard to people who still find themselves unable to build the way they want to because of the setbacks that then would be in place because of the planned development document or because of the defaults in the zoning code, what options do those people have to solve that problem? What steps would they need to take? And who would need to review that?
So in cases where the standard zoning or the planned development standards don't allow for the ideal development of the house, a property owner could apply for what's called a variance. That's a planning application, and it is depending on the amount that they wanted to move into the setback. It would either be a minor or a major. So the minor variance goes before the zoning administrator, which is a quicker process. Major variances go before the planning commission. And so that's the option to address encroaching into the setback further than what's currently allowed.
Great. So a property owner who wanted to do that would be able to go to the permit center and discuss whether their desired building envelope would require a minor or a major, and then whatever costs might be associated with that. That's something people could find out ahead of time before they go down that path.
Yes. Also, I wanted to note, there's something unusual about the Resilient City Boundary District in terms of setbacks. So if they do have a planned development overlay on that instead of R16, we, it's not an either-or. It's actually which setbacks do they pick from either or? So it's a little bit different than the rest of the city, and that's, again, speaking to just trying to give some flexibility. So they can select which setbacks they want from either the district, the planned development or the R16 standard, and then work from there. So hopefully, just that flexibility alone will not require too many applicants to require a variance process, but that's the last resort. And we'll work with them and find every creative option we can for them so that they can rebuild in the manner that they wish.
Great. And just want to talk a little bit about the Hillside Development Ordinance and the setbacks that are in there. So there are parts of the zoning code that have setbacks in them that deal with specific land uses, and one of those is the Hillside Development Ordinance that we have. I assume that that continues to apply to properties where the topography would result in its application. Could I just get a comment on the role that the Hillside Development Ordinance will play going forward with the properties that are at issue tonight?
Sure. So properties that are proposing to change the footprint in hillside areas, which means the topography has a 10% slope or more, would need to comply with the Hillside Development Ordinance that sets specific setbacks. And that review would be done as a part of their building permit process. The Resilient City Urgency Ordinance that was passed delegated approval of any hillside development permit within these areas to the Director of Planning and Economic Development.
Okay. So if a home had been built before the Hillside Development Ordinance was passed and somebody wants to rebuild it, are they, they're subject to the Hillside Development Ordinance the same as anyone else, or is that incorrect?
So actually, it's if they increase the square footage within a certain slope. So that's when the foundation is moved around, new development proposal, same footprint, same house, then no. So what we're seeing is some of those expansions, and then we're trying to analyze where those expansions are going in the site, and potentially, they could hit the hillside requirements as part of that process.
Great. Thanks very much. Commissioners, any questions for staff before we bring it back to the commission? Okay, great. Would anybody like to move a resolution for purposes of discussion?
I'll go ahead and move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Rosa recommending that the city engineer execute and record certificates of correction to remove references to building setbacks and building envelopes on specified subdivision final maps within the Resilient City zones, PRJ 18-031, and wait for the reading of the text.
I'll second.
Okay. That was moved by Commissioner Cisco, seconded by Commissioner Duggan. Commissioner Cisco, would you like to begin?
Well, I'm always impressed with our staff and the lengths that you go to, to, and have been going to, to try to solve problems. I know we all got a letter from an individual that was struggling in Coffee Park with the setbacks. So I think that this particular correction gives maximum flexibility to a horrendous situation. So again, I'm impressed with the work that staff has produced, and I hope the homeowners are going to be able to do what they need to do. And it sounds like they've got plenty of choices at this point, which is badly needed. So, thank you.
And Commissioner Duggan?
Yeah, I'm also in support of this ordinance. I think just giving people flexibility to rebuild is the best thing we can do to help the process, and I can make all the findings, and I'm in support of it.
Commissioner Collier?
I'm in complete support of this, and I think it's incredibly needed, and I'm thankful for staff time and Coffee Strong for everything that you guys are doing to help.
Vice Chair Weeks?
I'm also in support of this and do appreciate the thorough information that you provided to us. So thank you, staff.
Commissioner Rodenka?
Yes, I think this really couples nicely with the Resilient City Code, and that I really appreciate the additional illustrations that you provided and kind of clarifying, especially getting the understanding on the properties that are the corner lots and so on, and seeing that there's no cumulative effect in many sense. I fully support this.
Commissioner Peterson?
I'm going to echo my fellow commissioners on this. I, again, want to thank staff for their work on this. Came up at the last meeting, but, you know, we need big, bold ideas. This is, again, a great idea to allow homeowners the flexibility to rebuild, maybe add an I think letting them use their property to the fullest is a great situation all around, and I'm fully in support of this.
And I agree with every one of these statements. It was really impressive to see this solution worked out by staff, and I think that when we're talking about ways to help people who are rebuilding, one of the things that's important to making that process go as quickly as possible is to make it as standardized as possible so that staff don't have to spend an inordinate amount of their valuable time on coming up with individual solutions to a problem that really can be addressed in a way like this. That frees up staff time to do the nuts and bolts permit processing and work through truly unusual circumstances that might apply to people's property. So I think that not only for the affected parcels that we're talking about tonight, but for everybody who is trying to rebuild, this is going to make the process, if anything, simpler, more reliable, faster, and more friendly to people who are trying to sort of start a new dream when they're rebuilding. Okay. The resolution was moved by Commissioner Cisco, seconded by Commissioner Duggan. Your votes, please. And that passes with seven ayes, and I think we'll take a five-minute break. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order a little too forcefully. And we have a request from one of the applicants to hear item 10.4 out of order here ahead of item 10.3. And we are going to make that change and reorder the agenda. So now we'll be hearing item 10.4, the Hampton Inn and Suites Conditional Use Permit, and Susie Murray will be giving the staff presentation.
Do you want to do ex parte?
Oh, and this is a public hearing and an ex parte disclosure. Commissioner Collier, anything to disclose?
I visited the site and I have nothing further to disclose.
Commissioner Duggan?
I have visited the site and have nothing further to disclose.
Commissioner Cisco?
And I have visited the site and also saw this item at the Waterways Committee.
And Vice Chair Weeks?
I also visited the site and have nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Ronnega?
I visited the site and have nothing to disclose.
And Commissioner Peterson?
I have visited the site and have no new information to disclose.
And I also visited the site and have no new information to disclose. And with that, staff presentation will be delivered by Susie Murray.
Just a microphone would help there. Yeah, the project before you is the Hampton Inn and Suites. It's located up at the northwestern end of Airway Drive, and it does not yet have a street address assigned to it. The proposal is to construct a 50-foot-tall, four-story, 100-room hotel. The use itself only requires a minor conditional use permit, which would normally go before the zoning administrator. But because it also requests an additional 20 feet in height over the allowable 35-foot building height, it requires a major conditional use permit. So both the use and the additional height are before you this evening. Here are some aerials of this site. The property is outlined in kind of that turquoise-blue color. The image on the left is what was there prior to the October firestorms, and the image on the right, the lower right, is current. The project history, it started back in October of 2016, actually. The applicant came in with a zoning text amendment to add the hotel use to the commercial office zoning district, which the council approved. In April of 2017, the Design Review Board reviewed this hotel as a concept item and made several recommendations, which were implemented when the application was submitted. The application for a design review came in a couple of months later. Companion conditional use permit for the additional height was determined that it needed that, and that followed again a couple of months later. And let's see, the Waterways Advisory Committee reviewed the project back in January, indicating support for the project. There were some comments that were outlined in your staff report. The Sonoma County Water Agency also attended that meeting, and they too added comments, mostly, well, completely, about landscaping around the creek and about how guests with dogs may behave and some amenities for them. On May 3, the Design Review Board granted preliminary design review. I was unable to add that to the staff report because I wrote the staff report before that date. They delegated final design review to staff. The general plan land use designation for the site is office. It's surrounded to the north, I guess, located to the north is the Sutter Medical Office Building, so it's also the same land use designation. Off to the east and south, I'm sorry, off to the west and the south side, let me start over there, off to the west is residential. On the western side of the south side, it's also medium-density residential, a higher density. And then directly below where the hotel would be located on that parcel is retail and business This time, I actually put a star there to show you the location of the site. It's within the commercial office zoning district, which is consistent with the office general plan land use designation. It's also within the gateway and resilient city combining districts. So it's very visible, well, it's got a direct line of sight to the freeway, but there's quite a bit of landscaping. We'll show you some visual simulations as we get further in. But again, the zoning is consistent with the general plan. And here are some images of the hotel superimposed on some aerials. The top is looking west from Highway 101. The lower left is looking north from Highway 101, and the lower right is looking south, kind of southwest from 101, further up north. The project has been found in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. It's consistent with the general plan and zoning, and when the hotel use was approved in the commercial office district, that too was found consistent with the general plan EIR analysis, found to be within the scope of that. It also qualifies for a categorical exemption under Section 15332 as infill development. Here's a site plan which identifies the hotel, kind of, I'm sure you can see it there. It shares a driveway with the Sutter Medical Office Building. And here are the north and east elevations. So the north elevation is what people will see of the hotel, what they can see, this is what they'll see from the freeway. And then the east elevation is when they're entering the driveway, what they'll see. Now, this doesn't take into consideration mature landscaping. So, let's see, at the time, yeah, I updated the slide. Okay, we did receive one bit of public correspondence, and it was addressing traffic concerns. There was a traffic analysis done for the site. City traffic engineers reviewed that study, and the project's been conditioned appropriately. Both the traffic engineer, the consultant who wrote that report, and city staff that reviewed it are here, and there are no unresolved issues. So with that, it's recommended by Planning and Economic Development that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction of the Hampton Inn and Suites with additional building height and the use.
Great, thanks very much. I believe the applicant is here and may be wishing to make a presentation at this time?
No presentation.
Don Cape with Thoros and Oftality Development. And first, I just wanted to thank you for, again, it's a token to what the city does with the patrons who come and want to build projects and operate and be part of the community is what happened here tonight with you guys accommodating us. And unfortunately, we never know when these things are going to come up, and after three years of hard work with staff and their great work and all the consultants that go into bringing these things to fruition, you always take what you get. So the ability to do that's going to allow us to make a graduation tomorrow morning. So we really appreciate that. And again, staff's done a great job working with us along the way. We've been coming through this process for quite some time, and we're very excited to bring this to fruition and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much. Commissioners, any questions at this time for the applicant? Great, we might call you back up, but thanks very much. This is a public hearing. I don't have any cards on this item, but you don't need to have filled out a card to speak. I'm going to open the public hearing. And I'm not seeing anybody rise to speak, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for any questions of staff or the applicant. Commissioner Duggan?
Yeah, I apologize for not sending an email earlier this week, but what's the height of the medical office building or Kohl's? Do we have that information?
I don't know the height of those two buildings, but I'm relatively sure the Sutter Medical Office Building is four stories. They're similar in mathing, the two.
Commissioners, any Vice Chair Weeks?
This actually may be a question for the applicant, but I'll ask you first. Is there going to be specified staff parking? I know there was a discussion about sharing parking with the office or with the medical building, but will there be designated staff parking?
We typically don't have designated staff parking, but we always encourage our staff to park remotely to the hotel. And we do have, we share infrastructure with the Sutter Hospital Building, and they're excited to bring this project forward too as well. So we've been working with them very closely along the way. Regarding the height of the Sutter Hospital, I think it's probably close to 50 feet. It's a tall medical office building, so.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions at this time? Okay, we have one resolution. Would anybody like to move a resolution for the purposes of discussion?
I'll move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa making findings and determinations and approving a conditional use permit to allow additional building height for the construction of the Hampton Inn and Suites located at the northern end of Airway Drive, APN 058-011-018, file number PRJ17-076, and wait for the reading of the text.
I'll second.
Okay, the resolution was moved by Commissioner Cisco, seconded by Commissioner Duggan. Vice Chair Weeks?
Well, I just want to say thank you for bringing this forward, and I am in support of the project. We need hotel rooms, especially with two big hotels having been destroyed in the wildfire, and I think it's a good location for it, so thank you.
Commissioner Ronnega?
I certainly support this proposal, and the only question I have is, when do you start?
Commissioner Peterson?
I support this proposal, this project, this resolution, and would make all necessary findings.
Commissioner Cisco?
I'm also in support of the project, and we need the hotel rooms, so thank you.
Commissioner Duggan?
I'm also in support of the project. I think it's going to be a nice use there, and I think the location is great, and I can make all the findings.
And Commissioner Collier?
I echo my fellow commissioners and support this project.
And I'm also in support of the project. It's badly needed. I want to actually take a second to appreciate the fact that you went higher and that you decided to go the more difficult route of getting the CUP for the height. It's obvious, based on all the materials that we were provided, that there's no negative effects by virtue of that additional height, and if anything, it's going to be good for the city to have those additional rooms. I do want to go back to my Greatest Hits CD and say that parking reductions are always appreciated, but can understand why you would want a project that's up to code with regard to that, so. Okay, the resolution was moved by Commissioner Cisco, seconded by Commissioner Duggan, and your votes, please. And that passes with seven eyes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we will move to Agenda Item 10.3, the Middle Relief Partners Cultivation Facility Conditional Use Permit for 1805 Empire Industrial Court. And once again, Susie Murray will be making the staff presentation. This is an ex parte disclosure. Commissioner Collier, anything to disclose?
I visited the site and have nothing further to disclose.
Commissioner Duggan?
I have visited the site and have nothing further to disclose.
Commissioner Cisco?
I also visited the site and have nothing new to disclose.
Vice Chair Weeks?
I also visited the site and have nothing else to disclose.
Commissioner Ronnega?
I have nothing to disclose.
And Commissioner Peterson?
I visited the site and have no new information to disclose.
And I also visited the site and have no new information to disclose. And Susie Murray, as I said, will be giving the staff presentation.
This presentation is for Middle Relief Partners Cannabis Cultivation located at 1805 Empire Industrial Court. The project description, they're proposing to operate an approximately 9,500-square-foot cannabis cultivation facility, requires a major conditional use permit because it is in excess of 5,000 square feet. It's located at 1805 Industrial Court and is in close proximity to properties that were affected also by the fires. The image up on the upper left is with a star, shows where the project is proposed, and it shows the location prior to the fires, and likewise down on the left-hand corner, or I'm sorry, the lower right, you can see the burn damage in the northwest corner. Here's a close-up of the site. It's already developed. At this point in time, they're not adding any additional structures or anything. The project history, they requested a pre-application meeting, which was held with city staff on April 4 back in 2017. They had a neighborhood meeting on June 27 last year. And at the neighborhood meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion, and I've kind of summarized those comments, concerns from neighbors further in the public comments section of this presentation, so I won't forget to touch on that. In December, staff received some revised drawings, then based on the update to the cannabis ordinance, they just included the adult use in the description in January. The general plan land use designation for the site is light industry, which is intended for light industrial and commercial uses. Actually, I'm going to go back to that. It's surrounded to the north, it's bordered directly to the north by low-density residential. The zoning is consistent. It's a PD district, but it's an industrial PD. A copy of that policy statement was included as an attachment to your staff report. And it doesn't identify the uses in the policy statement. It mostly speaks to development standards for that park. And the zoning code has a section for, I don't know the code section off the top of my head, but it speaks about planned developments, and when uses are not identified in a policy statement, it directs us to the land use tables for the zoning district that would implement the general planned land use designation, which in this case is light industrial. The project qualifies for several either streamlining measures or categorical exemptions in order to comply with the Environmental Quality Act. It's consistent with general plan and zoning. It only involves minor exterior changes to the building, minor alterations and the change of use. And then it qualifies also as infill development. Here's a site plan, which basically shows us where the building is and where the entrances are, the parking lot, and what have you. Here's an image of the ground floor, and the star denotes where the Sally Port will be, so it's located on the backside of the building. I believe it's backside of the building. No, I should take that back. It's located on the lower side of the building. I'm not sure what's north there. Thank you. That would be the architect correcting me in the background. That's the west side of the building. Okay. Anyways, let's see, let's get to the public comments. Public comments, there was concern about homeless people living behind the property in between a new fence and getting in between a new fence and an existing residential fence. There was concern of the addition of a future dispensary use. There was concern of future, the addition of a future dispensary use and/or the expansion of misuse. There was concerns about odors and noise. People were worried about their property values. And then there was an interesting discussion in the neighborhood meeting about safety versus privacy, when they heard, you know, that there would be, you know, lighting and cameras, wanted to make sure that that was directed, you know, strictly to the site. It wasn't something that was going to be lighting up people's backyards or taping people's backyards, and so, so that was a discussion that came up. Groundwater contamination, there was a concern of that because of pesticides or fertilizers, which will not be used, and vehicular traffic in the area. There was, just in the last couple of days, included in your late correspondence, there was an email voicing concern about proximity to schools in the area. And then I received a phone call about over-concentration, and actually, the same email expressed concerns about over-concentration as well. So a couple of neighbors, one to the north in the residential neighborhood to the north, and then another one of the property owners on Empire Industrial called about the over-concentration. There are no unresolved issues, and staff is recommending, or, God, is recommending by Planning and Economic Development that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to operate a medical and adult-use cannabis cultivation facility.
Thanks very much. Commissioners, any questions for staff before we invite the applicant to make some comments? Okay, I believe the applicant or his representative is here, and I invite you to speak about the project.
Yeah, good evening. This is Joe Rogaway, attorney here on behalf of the applicant. I don't have a presentation per se. I am available to answer any questions and augment the presentation that was already provided to the commission, so whatever further questions you may have, I am more than happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks very much. Commissioners, any questions at this time? Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. I don't have any cards on the item, but you don't need to have filled out a card to speak, so I'm going to open the public hearing and ask any member of the public who wishes to speak to approach the microphone and state your name for the record.
Thank you very much. I'm Barbara Hollerin, and I live at 1819 Sansone, which is the street just north of Empire Industrial. And we did meet, and a group of us met the 27th of June last year, and it was a very productive meeting, but a lot has happened since then in that, in the neighborhood. The previous group that was here, the Coffee Creek Estates people are our neighbors also, and we grieve for their loss. They're coming back, we hope, with your assistance. There's families and young children that are in this area, and directly behind 1805, there's a new baby who was born just in October after the fire, and they had to leave, they've come back. They are concerned about noise, pollution, cameras, lights. These people have been out of their house for six months. It has been so traumatic for the family. Young people farther down the street, two little children, they left with the destruction that was around us, and they have come back. And we are just really concerned. You know, on Piner Road, there's a tremendously popular, I, tongue, popular area epic for the young people and families. That's just a block north. People are flocking to Epic, and it's wonderful. Just across the street from 1805 is a wellness studio for women, exercise for young moms, there's a studio, dance studio, exercise, lots of that kind of, and that's directly across the street. Schaefer School is a little over two blocks up the street, and, you know, right now, there's just so much traffic and reconstruction, and Coffee Street is really impacted. So my neighbors are raising their families, they didn't come, I'm the rep today. So we are very, very concerned about that environment that's going to be on the south side of Sansone. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much. There was, is any other member of the public wishing to speak under public comment? I'm seeing nobody else rise, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Just want to invite the applicant to address some of the concerns. There was some overlap, significant overlap between the comments we just heard and some of the issues that Ms. Murray identified in the staff report, or excuse me, in the staff presentation. So I'll invite you to address them in whatever order, and then the ones that you don't address, I'll follow up and ask you how you address those concerns.
Yeah, certainly. Well, thank you for the opportunity to address these concerns, obviously. The considerations that we're dealing with as a community as a result of the fires is something that is fairly comprehensive and something that we're all dealing with. And this project does not do anything to interfere with the recovery of people that are seeking to rebuild their lives after the fire. And in fact, it's something that people who live in that neighborhood won't have any outside indication as to what's happening inside of the facility itself at 1805 Empire Industrial Court. Specifically, what we're describing, the issues that would really, I think, be noticeable from the outside, that is particularly related to odor, and particularly related to issues of traffic, and then to a lesser extent, I think, lighting. As it relates to odor, I believe that we have addressed this issue in our materials, in our odor mitigation plan, which is pursuant to the requirements of the ordinance. We have included there the specifications for the carbon filtration that will be included in the facility, and there's going to be air filtration advice, devices installed in each room that is compartmentalized within the facility, so as to not have any detectable odor of marijuana outside of the facility. And I think that's important for the neighbors to understand. With regards to traffic, we did the traffic study. I believe that you have that before you and was appended to our documents. And what we've actually been able to determine through that traffic study is that there's going to be a significant diminishment in the amount of trips per day because of the no longer using that building for retail. Previously, there was a retail use, there will not be a retail use here. That's significant, because there's actually going to be less traffic now than there was before. That then dovetails into another issue, which is the concern that somehow this building will be used as a dispensary. The applicant has no intention of using this site as a dispensary. The application window for that has already passed, that's not a part of this plan at all, and I think that's just important to correct, because there isn't going to be a public-facing component of this project. The building is going to have all cannabis operations located internally. There is going to be no outward signage or manifestation that it is a cannabis use. The surveillance of cameras that are mandated in order to secure the facility is not going to, in any way, be capturing the neighbors. Those are all going to be directed back to the facility itself, only as needed for the security of the site. And that's all delineated in the project description as well, in terms of the format being the universal format, the access that law enforcement is going to have to the footage in the case of there being a security breach. And that's augmenting other significant measures that we're taking in order to ensure security. We're going to have the locking mechanisms that are delineated in the project description. We're going to have the panic button as delineated in the project description. We're also going to have onsite security present there, former law enforcement is going to be there as well. So it's going to be secure, but also respectful of the neighbors and ensuring that there isn't any loss of privacy. With regards to groundwater contamination, this is all going to be in, on municipal water. There's not going to be any water that is put directly onto the soil going into the groundwater, and there are filtration systems, as delineated in the project description, that is going to remove the sort of more, I guess, problematic things that could go into the water, understanding that the real concerns of the types of things that can go into the water aren't allowed under the cannabis regulations anyway. And so one of the things that's happened over the last year since we submitted initially our application, is that the state of California promulgated many hundreds of pages of regulations to implement the statutes that were created by the legislature. Included in there are mandatory testing protocols, and those testing protocols create thresholds for permissive amounts of pesticides, insecticides, et cetera, which make it incredibly difficult and practical, and not a part of this project to include those types of substances on the plant. So the cultivation itself is going to be accomplished using safer methodology than historically, one would assume, the sort of generic cannabis cultivator was using historically. The water itself is all going to be going into filtration systems that are going to be, the water's going to be safely handled through that process. And so with regards to the groundwater contamination, I do not see that as being an actual problem or concern to have with regards to this project. With regards to noise, that is also addressed in the project description. The ordinance covers what amount of noise is allowed to be detectable outside of the building, and that amount of noise will be beneath the ceiling of what is allowed under the statute, and all this will be addressed as we go through, following this part of the process, through the building permit phase as well. I believe that covers each of the items that were raised in both the comments, as well as the presentation by staff, but I'm happy to address whatever else the commission would like to discuss.
Great, thanks very much. I think I just want to ask staff in a minute quickly about the over-concentration, proximity to schools, and the odor standards, just to quickly go over those. But before that, do any commissioners have any further questions for the applicant? Okay, great. Just wanted to briefly go over what the odor standard is for these cannabis uses and what would constitute a violation of those standards.
I mean, I can respond generally. We do have the ordinance here, we can respond very specifically, but generally, the standard is that the odor of cannabis is not to be detected outside the structure, so it's even more restrictive than, you know, at the property line. And it's quite a substantive standard, so if you can smell it, then they're doing something wrong, and you can file a code enforcement complaint. But in advance of that, we have other protocols. We require a proposal as part of their occupancy permits to demonstrate how they're going to meet that standard. So as part of the building permit process, they will be supplying the information, the equipment that they'll be using, that's prepared by licensed engineers, and of course, all part of the inspection process for the building permit and the fire permits. But the standard, to be clear, is that you cannot smell cannabis from outside the structure, and that is one of those unique things to our cannabis policy. We don't do that to anyone else. You can brew beer and smell it outside, you can make coffee, but for cannabis, we made that sort of higher standard, because it is so offensive to some neighbors, and so that was a big element to that requirement. The, the distance to schools, you know, surrounding land uses and compatibilities, as was noted in an earlier study session today, that is one of your findings, is looking at compatibility of surrounding existing and planned uses. But there is not a standard prohibition to locate a cultivation facility in proximity to a school or to a residential use. And much of that was predicated on the fact that we have standards that are very clear for security, odor, noise, and lighting. Again, not at the expense, at the, at the, the burden is on the applicant to provide those protocols, but those protocols to address security, odor, lighting, and noise is not at the expense of any surrounding tenant or property owner. So we do have safeguards in those, in that ordinance to make sure that the light doesn't trespass, the surveillance isn't trespassing, but they are addressing the issue at hand.
Great, thanks very much. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Would somebody like to move a resolution for the purposes of discussion?
Okay, I'm at it again. I move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa making findings and determinations and approving a conditional use permit for Middle Relief Partners, a cannabis cultivation facility located at 1805 Empire Industrial Court, assessors parcel number 015-731-002, file number CUP 17-057, and wave for the reading of the text.
I'll second.
Okay, that was moved by Commissioner Cisco, seconded by Commissioner Duggan. Commissioner Peterson, would you like to start off?
Sure. So I am in support of this project. I think it was a great reminder from the deputy director that we're holding the cannabis industry above the standards of coffee, brewing beer, in terms of odor. I think this is the kind of use that's appropriate for this kind of industrial zoning. I think it's a good reminder that public outreach, getting buy-in from the local neighborhood is always very important, especially as we continue to move forward with a relatively new legal industry. And with, with that in mind, again, I'm in support of the project and would make all necessary findings.
Commissioner Gronega.
This is, what, our 20, 25th proposal over the last couple of years? But the, I think it's been good to have the experience of going through all these previous proposals, and in some ways, we see the product of good work in the description of the project, the narratives. I believe the gentleman that wrote that narrative and spoke tonight has done some other projects before the Planning Commission, and they've always seemed to be very well-done, and really think you have started to, and you probably did anyway, the whole matter of the odor, odor control. I've been a big crank about that from the get-go, and my thinking's evolved a little more. It's not only odor, odor control, so on, but it really does relate back to security. And I think it's a good thing that you've got a good security system, and that you've got, I think, a good control system, mechanical system, and then you put that together with your consulting architect, you're going to have a good project. So I'm in support of this.
Vice Chair Weeks.
I'm also in support of the project, and I appreciate the thoroughness of the project plan, so thank you.
Commissioner Cisco.
Yeah, again, tonight we're seeing a really tight application in project description, so that makes our job very easy. I definitely appreciate the evening security. I think that really benefits any neighbors that are adjacent to an industrial area, so I think it makes a better area for everybody, so I appreciate that you're doing that as well. So I definitely can make the findings on this, and I'm for the project.
Commissioner Duggan.
I'm also in support of the project. I'm confident that what we have in our cannabis code for this, the provisions about odor and noise and lighting and security are all, you know, ideally, you're not going to know what's in there once it's, once it's up and operational, and if you do, then that's, you know, you can file a code complaint on it, and I can make all the findings, and I'm in support. And I can make all the findings and I'm in support.
And Commissioner Kalia.
I also support this project. I echo my fellow commissioners on a land use level. This is a very tight application and it's done well. Thank you.
And I'm in support of the project as well, for many of the reasons that were already stated. The onsite security at night is a nice aspect of this project. I think that gives people who would perhaps be uncomfortable or would grow comfortable lonely over time to have some immediate sense of a little bit more security. Excuse me. And, you know, I think that we're finding, as more and more of these projects come before us and even when we were working through the ordinance with the city council, that there actually are fewer nuisance effects from these cultivation facilities than there might be from an industrial land use that would be completely permitted and would never undergo a conditional use hearing and perhaps no neighborhood meetings. That the uses that might come into a neighborhood just under a by-right interpretation of the zoning code could be much more noxious and nuisance generating than these cannabis facilities, which are very, very buttoned up and have very strict security protocols that they have to go through. So I can make all the findings, I support the project as well. The resolution was moved by Commissioner Cisco, seconded by Commissioner Duggan. Your votes, please. And that passes with seven ayes. And that concludes our agenda for the evening.